Sorry. This meeting will be called to order. Sorry for the delay, folks. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. And we'll move to a roll call. Mrs. Ezekiel?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Bushka?
Here.
No executive session at this time. We're moving right to number three, which is a presentation by Mrs. McPartland on the Oakland curriculum for the coming year.
Welcome to the August board meeting and I guess almost back to school. This evening, I'm going to be presenting on some of the areas that have been developed over the course of the 2022-23 school year in preparation for this upcoming 23-24 school year. So one of the things we're going to notice when you go to the Oakland website now is that our Curriculum Office webpage has been updated to reflect quite a few things. So the first is just an opening statement for all of you to be reminded of the fact that our district has adopted the Connected Action Roadmap Framework, also known as CAR. And under the CAR framework, you will -- these are, by the way, everything that is highlighted in yellow is a hyperlink for you to find additional information. Under the CAR framework, our teachers are functioning in professional learning communities, and through their professional learning communities, they are able to review standards that have been set forth by the Department of Education. They are able to review data in relation to assessments that we're doing across the district, and they are also able to communicate with each other about lesson planning, design, and how to meet student needs. Embedded in here as well is a link to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for all areas, should you wish to peruse that. It's pretty comprehensive. All of the areas that we cover throughout the state of New Jersey are listed here. And then also just some information about visible learning. This is something I'll point out a little bit in our curriculum page, but our districts have been studying the concept of visible learning for quite a few years. And basically, the concept around visible learning is that we are looking for highly engaging opportunities that really propel students' growth over the course of time. So one of our newest initiatives was to develop and adopt a new curriculum resource in terms of our curriculum development and being able to interact more appropriately. We used to have Atlas as our curriculum warehouse site, and we have moved to Power School's Unified Classroom, Curriculum, and Instruction. So you will, if you go to this link, you will find information just in general about what Power School does in terms of curriculum mapping and curriculum development. So this is just information about the platform itself. I'm going to get into the nitty-gritty of the actual curriculum for our districts right now. So when you go to the district website, you're going to see two things. One is Power School's Unified Curriculum, which I just mentioned, and Atlas. Atlas was our curriculum warehouse previously. However, we have not had to update all of our curriculum since we adopted Power School, which means there are some residual units of study that are located in Atlas. So this will remain throughout the course of the 23-24 school year as we transport everything over to Power School. So that's a huge initiative because it means copying all of our curriculum over, and that's going to take a bit of time. But that is available for anything that is not in Power School. I am going to take you to Power School's site in a moment, but before I do that, I want to highlight a specific initiative that has occurred over the course of the 22-23 school year, like I said, in preparation for 23-24, and that is the updated health and physical education standards and the curriculum associated with it. So our districts were fortunate to have a team of teachers who partnered with an organization called Physical Edge, who provided us support as we developed our curriculum for comprehensive health and PE. The topics for grades K through five are outlined individually on this page by grade level. I want to highlight the fact that the comprehensive health and PE standards were banned. That means that they were associated K-2 and 3-5. We chose to do two different things. We chose to parse out health separately so it was easily accessible to all families and also the same for physical ed. And then we also decided to make sure that we had a separate curriculum for each grade level. This will allow families to make informed decisions about the topics that are being covered in our health curriculum and whether or not they wish to choose to opt out of anything that is being discussed, and I'm going to get to that as well. One of the things I just want to highlight when you read through this information is that there is a New Jersey statute that is located at the bottom that talks about a parent's statement of conflict with conscience. This is where the opt-out process comes into play, should a family wish to go that route. So I'm just going to give you an example. I'm not going to go through each of these individually, but this is right on the webpage, so you don't even have to navigate through the curriculum platform in order to find this information. But we thought it was important to make sure that it was parsed out for you to be found easily. So I'm just going to go to kindergarten as an example. When you go to this page, you will find a letter that outlines the standards and outlines specifically the topics that are being addressed at this grade level. So every aspect of our curriculum has something called Essential Questions, which are the basic understandings and questions that would be taught and developed throughout the course of a unit of study. So for kindergarten, you'll notice here that the topics are outlined. They are bulleted for you, so you know exactly what is being covered in terms of topic. And then it also informs you again about the opt-out process, should you wish to exercise that right. And the same follows for every single grade level in terms of topics. I'll get to where the curriculum itself is housed in a moment, but this is just so you could have a bird's eye view as to what the topics are related to health. In addition, there is the Health Opt-Out Form located on this page. Again, it highlights the statute, and it highlights what you need to do in order for your family to opt out of something that they would like to exercise that right to do. This information in this form is filled out, must be provided to the building principal and also to the health and PE teacher, so that they can make sure they coordinate efforts. And topics specific to what you'd like to opt out of must be listed here on the document. So you may decide that there's an aspect of curriculum, such as bullying, that you want your child to be part of, and then there could be an aspect in particular to sex health education that you may not want your child. That might be something that you want to actually work on at home with your family, and so that would be a topic that you would list and inform your principal and the health and physical education teacher about. So I am going to go to the specific Power School site right now, but before I do that, I just want to highlight another project that occurred throughout the summer. And so generally speaking, for our ongoing curriculum related to New Jersey standards, that occurs over the course of a full year, so that teams have the opportunity to digest the standards, to really go through them, to help develop curriculum alongside each other as a team. However, we thought this year it was important to have crosswalks developed regarding some of the New Jersey Department of Education's initiatives that are really very important. So I'm going to show you what a crosswalk looks like and how that is different from a curriculum unit that we typically design, but I just wanted to highlight here that there were five core areas that we did crosswalks for: Amistad, Holocaust, diversity, equity, and inclusion, climate change, and informational literacy. You're going to see that these areas are highlighted in crosswalk form, and the goal of these topics is to make sure that on a grade level, we are able to identify the appropriate developmentally appropriate resources for the students who are going to be interacting with the topics at hand. So I'm going to take us to our new site and show you that when you come here, you're going to see that curriculum that is for public view, which means curriculum that has been approved and is ready to be implemented in a classroom, is here for families to peruse at their leisure if they'd like to know specific topics or things that are being covered by grade level and initiatives that are going on. So it's really easy to navigate this site. If you want to know what your child is learning in math, you would type in the topic of math. You could type in the grade level, and it says it in the search bar here. You can search by grade level, subject area, or course name. So at an elementary level, you're generally going to search for the general topics that you're used to: math, social studies, science, so on and so forth. So anything that was newly developed during 22-23 can be found in the site, so I just want to highlight that. So for example, I just want to show you one quick unit that was developed, and I'm just going to walk you through. So this is kindergarten math, and as you can see, there are five units in kindergarten math. And if you click on any of the units, it will take you to a page which will highlight for you the unit rationale, meaning the major topics that are going to be covered in that unit. Any of those Essential Questions, which I kind of highlighted earlier in the health curriculum. So these are goals that students would be working towards throughout the unit. The New Jersey Student Learning Standards that are being addressed in this specific unit, so you can see those here and kind of goes through if you'd like to know specifically what the content is for those units. And then you're going to see the instructional plan, and this is where the CAR framework really comes into view. I just want to highlight a few things for you in terms of curriculum. So first is student learning intentions. This is that visible learning language that I spoke about earlier. This is where students can understand what it is that they are going to be accomplishing during the course of this unit or lesson. Student learning strategies. These are activities or ways that students' needs are going to be addressed and what they'll be doing within the framework of that lesson. And then success criteria. For your purposes, this is probably the most important area, because this is where your students could identify what they can do after having been through this lesson. So for example, here, I can draw pictures to represent the numbers one and two. A student should walk away from this lesson being able to know that they have successfully accomplished this. And then you're going to see that there is a highlight of some assessments that we will be offering, activities that highlight the lesson, and then any modifications. So these are things that we would do to implement across the board where students need additional assistance or enrichment, and that's highlighted here, along with a specific standard. And then this repeats itself for every lesson that has been designed for this specific unit. So this is the exact framework and model you will see regardless of content, regardless of which New Jersey Student Learning Standard is in existence for everything that we've been writing currently. I'd like to now just take you to an example of one of the crosswalks that I mentioned. I do want to highlight that our crosswalks have been an ongoing summer project, and most of them are nearly complete. We have a few areas that are just being tidied up a bit by our curriculum developers, and they will be ready for the start of the school year. But I'd just like to highlight, I'm going to go to second grade climate change as an example. And here you will see a very similar format, but not exactly identical. Again, the goal of this is really to provide our students and teachers resources to discuss the topic at hand throughout the course of the school year. So this can be implemented by any teacher across any subject area, so that there's a unified focus on these specific areas that have been highlighted by the DOE. So in here, the goal and purpose. So every crosswalk will have a specific purpose and goals. They are generally connected to the Department of Education websites. Some of those websites are a little more robust than others, but there is some general information out there, and that's where this information is coming from. At each grade level, we have identified specific read-aloud texts and excerpts that teachers could implement in the classroom. You are able to view those by clicking any of the links that are here. Ultimately, we would really love to have card copies of these books, and I'm sure Ms. Hivistis will work very hard on that. But in the interim, we will have some virtual opportunities for you to see the read-alouds that are going to be shared with students. There are articles and/or video resources that are going to be used for instructional purposes, so these are offered to our teachers to implement in the course of their lesson and instruction, again, across the entire building. No matter what area you teach, this is afforded to you, and it really should be that way. It should be a common message and theme that's presented across the entire building. And then finally, there are some websites for students to interact with that could be used during independent work time centers, things of that nature. I'm really proud of this project. We had some very important teachers work on this initiative. I really would like to give a special thanks to Ms. Hivistis, who was our professional learning community leader, for this. For many of these projects, she has great insight in terms of being a library media specialist and knowing where these resources are, ensuring that the resources that we are using were appropriately vetted, along with supervisors, to make sure that this resource is comprehensive and absolutely accessible to every student, every staff member across the board. And that covers everything regarding our new curriculum website, our new curriculum warehouse, and some of the initiatives that have occurred over 22-23 and will lead into our instructional realm as the 23-24 school year comes into play.
Are there any questions about what Mrs. McPartland presented?
I just have a question. Is this going to be presented in any other form to parents, like at back-to-school night or anything like that?
That is something I certainly could mention to Ms. Bolden and Ms. Soloway.
I have a comment and a question.
Sure.
The comment is, I think that's, I think it looks great. It's so easy to navigate and go through. That's why I think maybe to back her up on showing parents that it's not overwhelming, and it's not curriculum-ish. It's easily readable. But the other crosswalks, are they, they're currently being worked on?
Yes.
And they'll be posted once they're up?
They will, yes. So as soon as everything is, as soon as any unit is finished, we go through and we actually manually publish it. It gives you like a, you know, make sure it's ready to go and everyone's for public consumption. So there's just a few tweaks that are being made across grade levels and topics.
And will that be a living change, like throughout the year, or?
So the crosswalk itself will likely remain the same, but that is something that's really interesting, and I should point out, and thank you for bringing it up. This website is dynamic, so anytime something is altered or changed within the platform, it automatically does make that change for the public site.
And the other curriculum outside of the crosswalks, will they, are they static or are they going to be?
Yeah, anything that's in Atlas from old, that is static, so there won't be any revisions to that. Those are areas that are going to probably be within the next year or two for cycle, so they really won't change. And then anything that we feel like is maybe beyond that, we're actually, our goal is to have, no longer have Atlas after the 23-24 school year. So we will move those things over. They will remain static until they get updated, and then they will be the same. It'll be dynamic.
Okay, great. Love it.
Sure.
I just have a whole thing I know with gender identity and all that kind of stuff. Is there a place on the website that shows exactly what is being taught with that?
Yes.
Because I think it's a very vast.
Yes.
So actual content of what the kids will be taught.
Yes, absolutely. So if you go to the curriculum page through Power School and you type in the topic of health, you will actually see the units for health. So those Essential Questions are outlined for you, but in the actual health curriculum, you will see all the resources that are being used for instruction. So if there are any PowerPoint presentations or videos being shown, those are all highlighted within the curriculum, and you can access them directly.
Just a quick question about parents that might wish to opt out of anything. Is there like a deadline, or is that sort of rolling?
So I think it would be important to understand structurally how health is implemented in Oakland, so that would be a really great question. Unfortunately, Ms. Bolden is not here tonight, because that kind of changes according to schedules every year. So that is something that I definitely think is, you know, it's very different across districts. So when is health actually being implemented? It's not typically implemented all year long, as there are support people, especially at the upper elementary grades, who help with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, that's why I suggest back-to-school night as a really good time to maybe talk about it and set a deadline or something, yeah.
It's a great idea. Thank you. I will definitely mention that.
Anyone have anything else? All right. Before Mrs.
I actually, yeah, just, I don't want to beat up the topic, but to piggyback off Amy because I'm sitting here scrolling. So I'm looking at it, and it identifies that there are success criteria. So I'll use Amy's example, gender. So a second grader will be successful if they can define the term gender. I think what, at least I can speak for myself here, where can we read what the definition of gender is, just so we understand what's being taught to the children? Because like, that's not hyperlink. That's not carved out separately.
But you should look at the resources, the instructional resources, within the learning plan, and that's where any resources that would specifically have been used would be found.
Right. So as far as an activity and a resource, it's a group discussion.
Okay.
So that doesn't really give us any context of what's going to be discussed in that group setting. You know what I mean? Like, that one's a little bit general, and we're just going to have to not know what's going to be discussed in that forum.
And in that case, I would say you're going to want to reach out to your health and PE teacher for that information.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So before Mrs. McPartland walks away, A, I just want to thank you for updating the website with this curriculum. I think we've been talking about it for like three years, and I'm overjoyed that it's all accessible now. But just want to acknowledge that this is Mrs. McPartland's last meeting here with the Oakland Board of Education, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the district, and I wish you well in your future endeavors. So thank you. We are going to move to Section 4, which is Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to move to Committee of the Whole?
So move second.
Moved and seconded? All right. We are now in Committee of the Whole. Does anyone have anything to bring to the full board before I start? Okay, so I will start, and then we can move if there's other items. So board members, you may or may have not seen an email today about two policies that are on the agenda for this evening, which were recently added. They are sick leave policy, as well as the school threat assessment teams. So these are two brand-new policies that are mandated by the state based on recently approved legislation. And it has been recommended that we approve these policies tonight by our attorney, sorry, which would mean that we would suspend Bylaw 0131 for this meeting only, for these two policies only, to go through a first and second reading tonight and approve these. There's been a lot of emails back and forth today about whether or not this is a good idea, because admittedly, many board members probably have not had a chance to read through them, since most people work all day. So I just want to have a discussion about what everyone is comfortable with, what the ramifications are if we do or do not approve them tonight, and I just kind of want to get a pulse of what people are feeling. I did read them, but I understand that maybe not everyone has had a chance to. And the sick leave one, I think, is pretty understandable based on what the changes are. But the school threat assessment teams, it's new, so maybe a little more time to digest and understand how we plan to implement it, so it may not be the same answer for both policies. So does anyone have anything to add right now?
I kind of just echo you with the sick leave one's pretty straightforward. I don't know that there's much to unpack there. So I admittedly did not get to read in detail the school, the threat assessment one because of the time that I received it, but the sick leave one, it seemed like the lesser of the two evils to go through, so that was digestible. And I think that if the rest of the group's okay with voting on that, there's really no point in delaying it.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. I don't.
No, no, I insist. Ladies before gentlemen.
You're very kind. No, I did read through it very quickly, and I would love more time, of course, but I think I have more questions that I don't think, even if I had had a week to read through it, I would have answered, when it comes to the school threat assessment teams, because I just, number one, it's new, and I'd prefer to have maybe a presentation or something of how it's going to be implemented. A couple of my questions are, you know, who's on the team? Because it must include a Safe Schools Resource Officer, which was a small point of discussion for a little bit of our May meeting, but I don't remember hearing, you know, a resolution or a plan for. And just knowing who else would be on it, I feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd rather see, you know, a plan of implementation before we approve a regulation.
I hate to say this now, but I don't have any problem with either one of the policies.
I appreciate your feedback. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I would kind of echo similar to Bill. I mean, I think the sick leave policy's pretty straightforward. There wasn't, I think, a lot of issue there, even with the school threat assessment. I mean, to Teresa's point, I am curious to see what does that actually look like in action? I mean, the foundation's there, which, on the foundation, I think is, I mean, there wasn't anything too alarming for me, but, I mean, it's a fair point to say, what does it actually look like in practice? But at the end of the day, I'd feel comfortable voting for both.
Yeah, I'd say the same here.
Rich, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm good with both, yeah.
All right. So we will tackle that when we get to Section 12. So we will tackle that when we get to section 12. Does anyone have anything else for committee of the whole?
Okay, I don't know whether to ask it here or ask it in the finance section, but, and I'll, once again, I'll show my ignorance. What's a phone port? Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm like yelling. It, it's a switch that went bad, that we had to actually replace in the phone system. So that's, I know you asked that bill in the, you asked that question in your email yesterday or the day before, but yeah, it was a part that we needed to fix the phone system.
What does it do?
Something networking. I don't know, something with the, with the phone system, but the, and it was happening in Collingswood a lot to a lot of our, the phone switches, the ports were going, were going bad. I know in Collingswood, we just replaced the phone system because schools were losing their phone services. But in this case, I think it was like a $200 part that needed to be replaced. So that's, I think, what you asked about.
Not a big charge. Another question on the, along the same ways.
Yeah.
Do we, how many Oakland staff have cell phones?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know that we surveyed that information.
No, well, let me, let me restate that.
Yeah.
Everybody in Oakland has a cellphone, even including me.
I think everybody in the world.
How many of those phones are being paid by the Oakland Board of Education?
Zero.
No, no part of any cellphone is being paid?
No.
What is the charge to?
Interglobe?
Interglobe, yes.
That is your phones that are in the building. Not your cellphone, but the phones that are, you know, in the main office and classroom phones. Every classroom has a phone in it.
Okay. Okay, last question, along the same lines. The curriculum.
Yes. It's the preschool curriculum, I think you asked about? Yes, it is very expensive.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. It's the state mandated curriculum. I really don't have a say in it, but that is.
Is that paid for out of the preschool funds?
Yes.
Great. And, okay, last question on the curriculum writing, the 13,500.
Yeah.
That covers Oakland pre-K to five and Collingswood six to 12.
I'm looking at Jen, but I know that a lot of the Oakland teachers helped with it, like they did a lot of the curriculum writing for both districts. So I believe it's going to be split 50/50.
Doesn't include Collingswood pre-K to five. So it does include pre-K to five. Okay. 13,500 is splitting 50/50 on that basis doesn't seem equitable to me. If it was Oakland, pre-K to five and Collingswood six to 12, I'm fine with that. But if Collingswood is piggybacking on the curriculum Oakland developed, we're paying for it, Collingswood's not. Okay, still doesn't seem equitable to me, but, okay, understand at this point. Okay, that's all for me.
Just want to make a comment, a large chunk of that was the new health and PE curriculum on that attachment there.
But that health and curriculum was for both districts.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Anything else for committee of the whole? Motion to come out of committee of the whole?
To move.
Second.
All right, we are now out of committee of the whole. Move on to section five, which is important dates and upcoming meetings. So we have them listed here. The first day of school is September 6th. That is the Wednesday after Labor Day. There will be a new family orientation here. That first week is all early dismissal days for students as well as staff PD days. And back to school night for Oakland preschool is September 12th. Back to school night for K through five is September 18th. And the next board of education meeting is September 19th here in the library. Moving on to routine board business, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June Board of Education meeting?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, that is approved. Section seven, hand it over to Dr. McDowell for the superintendent's report. Wait. That's not what it says here.
Yeah, but online it's.
Online it's different than what is here. Sorry. Apologies about that.
It's weird.
All right, we are moved to the first public comments statement.
To be fair, the site crashed twice today. It did crash twice today.
So if anyone has anything to bring to the board, this section is for agenda items only. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less and please stay and state your name and address. Does anyone have anything? All right, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
So, good evening, everyone. Section eight. Enrollment report, June of 2022 enrollment is 267. As of June 2023, enrollment is 276. The principal's report is attached. Also attached in the agenda is the school safety drill report for the month of June, the suspension report, and the child study team report for the month of June. Those are all attached as well.
All right, section nine, the board administrator report.
All right, it's been a busy summer. So tonight we have the June 2023 and the July 2023 financials. The auditors have been in, so I can honestly say the July financials are, include all the audit adjustments and you're good to go for the school year. So that's item 9.01. And then in 9.02, same thing. We've got your treasures report, cash reports for June and July. And 9.03 is a listing of the purchase orders for July. We don't have a listing of the purchase orders for August because we literally just rolled the month into August like two days ago. And 9.04 is a listing of the warrants that were issued in July and August, or July, and then the August warrants that will be paid for tomorrow morning. And like I said before, the audit has been completed for both Collingswood and Oakland. As is usual, we're probably not going to have a final audit report until very late because of the treasurer being very slow with giving us pension information, but I do want you to know that the field work has been completed. So, yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you. Section 10, finance and buildings and grounds committee. Rich?
Good evening, everyone. We're looking for approval of items 10.01 through 10.15. 10.01, we have approval of budget transfers. 10.02, 10.03 is the approval of certifications of no over expenditures. 10.04 is approval of secretary treasury reports. 10.05 and 10.06 is for the approval of purchase orders and warrants. 10.7 is approval to submit a request of the county to increase the outline budget lines beyond 10%. 10.8 is approval of an addendum to the existing Oakland-Collingswood pre-K rental agreement. 10.9 is the approval of the 2023-24 budget calendar. 10.10 is approval to submit the IDEA grant for 2023-24 with the outlined allocations. 10.11 is approval to amend the 2023-24 IDEA grant to adjust line item amounts. 10.12 is approval of the 2023-24 restroom waivers for pre-K and kindergarten. That has to do with the proximity that the bathrooms are to the classrooms. 10.13 is approval of Tia Hinson-Harvey to provide learning assessments and reports on an as-needed basis for the summer and for the 2023-24 school year.
Hey, Rich, I'm sorry, you forgot 10.13. Maintenance of equity state aid notification.
Gotcha. 10.13 is the maintenance of equity aid, equity, equity state aid notification. That has to do with our state funding. 10.14 is the approval of Tina Hinson-Harvey to provide learning assessments and reports. And 10.15 and 10.16 are use facilities requests. 10.14 is from the Oakland Cougars Athletic Association. And 10.16 is from the Oakland Soccer Club. When we talked about it at committee, I think it was pending clarification on specific dates.
I still didn't get a list of dates from either group, other than both groups were saying they were working together. For the fields, I think we attached everything, all the email correspondences. I have been asking the, submitting the buildings and grounds office just to get back with both contacts, because we would at least like a start date. Both groups sent in their requests for the fall field usage, but with no dates, just that we're going to work it out with the football field, and the football field said we're going to work it out with the soccer field. But I still like to have on the calendar who's using the field and when. And nobody's being very cooperative. I don't have that information, so it's up to you guys if you want to approve it. I think soccer is getting ready to start, if it hasn't started already, but I would like to at least have a, you know, so it's on the calendar. So when we do get requests from outside groups, if they go on our calendar, it looks, you know, I at least know who's on there. And we don't have, we don't say yes to groups when we shouldn't because I don't know when somebody's using our field. So it's up to you guys what you want to do with this one, to be honest.
And that they're both going to start before our next board meeting, it's probably a good idea to grant it to both of them and notify the Oakland Police Department that they should be here every weekend so that they can break up the fights between the two groups. I'm kidding about that part.
So that's it, 10.01 through 10.16.
All right, is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
I think that was a move in a second.
Second.
And are there any questions on any of those items?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement, not a question. We don't seem to be doing much in the house. Everything that we're doing is shipped out to somebody. It's undoubtedly more expensive doing it that way. I don't know, it might be a better product, I don't know, but it just seems that we're not doing anything in-house that we used to do.
So I guess along that comment, I wonder if Dr. McDowell or maybe Mrs. McPartlin can just give more clarification on the learning assessment services that are part of the agenda?
Yeah, it's not just the assessment services. That's one of, one of the things there. But look through the agenda and you'll find a number of items that, or look through the checks, and there are a number of items where we're paying a third party to do a project that I think we should be able to do ourselves.
Yes, it came in from Dr. Whitehouse, and we approve these assessment services on an as-needed basis for testing services of our child study team. Cannot get the reevaluations or the testing done within the, I'm not going to get these dates wrong, but I know like, once they're notified, they have so many days to do the testing and so many days to write the report. So sometimes they, you know, if our team is overwhelmed with the reevaluations and the current testing, they do bring somebody in so that they're not missing their deadlines. Hopefully I said that right.
Just out of curiosity, is this a Collingswood employee or is this someone out of district? I'm just curious. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
And if you want, I know, for those of you who are on the finance committee call, I can explain item 10.13. Even I'm a little confused, but, so when we get money from the federal government, whether it's Title I or IDEA, local districts have a maintenance of equity requirement, especially with IDEA and special ed funding. So I can't, we can't lower the dollar amount we're spending on pupils, right, if we get more money. Yeah, we have to keep our spending. We can add to, but we can't lower the cost per pupil. We have to maintain our level of spending. So when the state of New Jersey got the Federal American Rescue Plan Act money, ARP, the federal government had a maintenance of equity requirement for the, for states, right? So what happened is, and I know we've been saying it's for years, and I was actually wishing Collingswood would get the same consideration, but they didn't, that the state, over the last three-year period, has reduced the amount of money that they've been sending to Oakland on a per-pupil basis, right? They look at the last three years and they shouldn't have, right? Because they're taking this federal money. So as a result, for the last three years, they need to make up the state aid, the difference in the, in state aid that they've taken away because they're getting federal money. So in a nutshell, over the last three years, they've reduced the, even though we got more state aid in Oakland last year, we had more kids, but on a per-pupil basis, that is per child, the amount has gone down over three years. So the state is giving us an additional 466,000, which is great, which last year would have been helpful during the budget season, as we know, but they told me in July, and actually it was for the 2223 school year that ended in June, and I got the notification on July 10th, because that's how government works, folks. So I did, and that, so because it came in after the budget was done, it required board, a board resolution, which this is, and they automatically granted us the approval that we would need from the county office to increase this year's budget so that we can utilize these monies. And I hope I explained that well, because I had to read the notice like three or four different times, and then the auditor and I sat there like, what are we doing with this? Because there's only a few districts in the state that got it. So, yeah, so that, hopefully that explains that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation. Any other questions? We go to, we'll call. All right, we'll call.
Okay. This is Ezekiel.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Bushell.
Yes.
All right, moving to section 11. Todd, for the curriculum and personnel committee report.
All righty, so item 11.01, we're looking for approval of our virtual or remote emergency instructional plan for 2023, 2024. So what we're approving here, seeking approval on, is that should we have another pandemic or whatever, where we're forced to go remote, that our virtual remote instructional plan is in compliance with the governor's executive order. So should we, hopefully we never do, but should we go in that direction, we're just approving our plan that it's in compliance with the governor's executive order. Item 11.02, approving the district curriculum that was presented. We did vote on this, I believe, in our June meeting, but there's been some tweaks, additions. I believe the crosswalks were added. So that's why we are voting again tonight on the curriculum that Ms. McPartlin presented. Item 11.03 is the curriculum stipend with Oakland paying an amount of 6,750. That was the point that Mr. Stotts addressed earlier in the evening, so that is there for your review. Item 11.04, we're looking for approval to continue our partnership with Rowan University, the intern and practicum affiliation, to automatically renew. the Intern and Practicum affiliation, to automatically renew for one-year terms unless either party notifies in writing their intention not to renew the agreement. Item 11.05, we're looking to approve long-term substitute replacement, Brandy Woods, effective October 8th through February 19th, pending the return of the regular teacher, who I believe is on maternity leave. Item 11.06, we are seeking approval for tuition reimbursement for Katie Morocco and Julie Snyder, $3,000 each. Item 11.07, we are looking for approval of the following substitutes and tutors that are listed there for you. And that is that. So we're seeking approval on items 11.01 through 11.07.
Okay, is there a motion to approve those items?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions about any of those?
So, not a question, but just a comment as it regards to the curriculum. So as I mentioned, we did have that presented in June. There's been some additions, tweaks, and things of that nature. In our vote in June, I had abstained. I will be abstaining again this evening. I just wanted to give some clarification for that. I believe Ms. McPartland and her team did a phenomenal job. There's a lot of great work in the curriculum, especially when you look at some of the math, social studies, reading, writing, and the layout of the website, how things have been presented, I think especially in regards to the opt-out and the concerns that some parents have. I think it's pretty clear. And I think on our end, Oakland today did a phenomenal job. I've had concerns, I guess it probably goes back to 2020, with some of the standards, in particular, the standards that the state adopted, in health and PE in particular, some of the standards as they pertain to gender, gender identity, gender expression. I don't believe those are standards appropriate in a public education curriculum, in particular at an elementary level. But when the state standards are in place, there's not too much there. So that is why I will be abstaining tonight. It is not a reflection on the work that Ms. McPartland did or her curriculum-writing team. I think they did a great job. But when there's standards in place that I have an issue with, and it's not like we're doing a line item vote on the curriculum, it's all there. So rather than vote no, because I do feel there is some solid curriculum in there, I'll be abstaining from that vote due to some of the concerns I have with the state's standards, in particular, the health and PE that relate to gender.
All right, thank you. Moving to a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
I agree with Todd, and I'll be voting yes to everything but 11.02, which I will abstain.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes, except the 11.03, or 11.03 where I vote no.
02 or 03? 3?
03, 03.
Okay, I'll make sure I got it right. Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes, abstain from 11.02.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, moving on to Section 12, School, Community Relations, and Policy Committee. This is Truce.
Hi, so item 12.01 is the PTA liaison report, which I'm happy to present. The PTA has not met since our last meeting, but their first meeting is, forgive me, in October, October 3rd at 6:30. They are planning an ice cream social on September 15th, and there's going to be a lot forthcoming. I know that we're working on the artwork for the PTA calendar and asking for a lot of students to participate. So looking forward to an exciting year. Item 12.02 is the OMSAC report. Also have not met, but I can report that we have been talking about bringing back the Oakland Color Run. And I am actively seeking anyone who would like to help with it, but that would be a major fundraiser for OMSAC and possibly the Friends of the Oakland Library. There's a potential date of October 22nd, so we'll see if I can handle all that and get some help. More on that later. Item 12.03 is the Collingswood Board of Education Report. Mr. Stotts.
And I apologize, I don't have a report tonight because I managed somehow to lose my notes for that meeting over the summer. It's hard to believe, I can go back two or three years with notes, and I, for whatever reason, I just don't have these. I've had a tough summer, so I apologize, but I just don't have a report for the June meeting of Collingswood.
Okay, just a comment on that. Collingswood does publish, and I don't know how exactly I get it, a recap of the board meetings? Does anyone else get that, possibly as a parent of a middle-schooler? Yes? That just might be something as, it's an interesting thing to think about. No, 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 I didn't mean that. I just meant it's a good, it was good, it's good community communication, and maybe it might be nice to share with at least our board. So. Item 12.04 is Oakland Education Foundation Report. And Mr. McMillan.
Same. It's been summer, and I don't think, I think everybody's been enjoying their summer and not meeting, so I haven't heard anything either.
Okay, item 12.05 is what we've discussed in committee of the whole, so the recommendation to suspend bylaw 0131 for this meeting only, to adopt the following new policies with one reading based on recently approved legislation from the Department of Ed. There'd be 1642.01, the sick leave, and 2419, the school threat assessment teams. Item 12.06 is a first reading of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying revised policy, which is 5512. Item 12.07 are regulations requiring one reading, so this includes the sick leave, 1642.01, school threat assessment, 2419, attendance revised policy, 5200, and then the student records revised policy, 8330. Item 12.08 is the HIV report, and there are none reported. So we are seeking approval for items 12.01 through 12.08.
I have a motion to approve those items.
So move.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Are there any questions about any of those?
I just have a comment. 8330R, there was a question that our committee had on page, it's on page seven of the revised policy, about why records of disciplinary infractions, penalties, and disciplinary hearings was being deleted from the policy, and I don't know if we got any answer on that. I don't recall.
Oh, I did. I sent it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to remember the answer. I did send it.
It's in my inbox, and I'm, I apologize. It is not, that is deleted from the policy, and I know our committee had wondered why.
And I did get an answer. Sorry, can you see that on my computer? I can't get in my email right now, it's.
Oh, what I have is, you reached out to Stross SSM, but have not heard back yet.
I thought I sent another one at the end of yesterday, that they did, we did hear back from them. And I'm sorry, completely drawing a blank.
I'm still looking, sorry. I don't have that. I'm okay approving it without it. I'm just, I was just curious about that.
No, there was an answer. I had to go back to them a couple times. Technology is great, isn't it?
I think the latest I have is that you're still waiting for an update, but that was last week. I could have sworn I got.
I'll double-check. I could have sworn I got an answer. I thought I sent it, but. Probably. You're not wrong about that.
And then the only other comment I would have is, you know, I would suggest a, either in committee or a committee of the whole, some kind of discussion about 2419, the school threat assessment plan at a future meeting.
So my question on that is, it has to be passed by September 1st, right? So would we have a special, yeah, would we have a special meeting?
Yeah, the, yeah, the bylaw that they were suspending for one meeting only makes for one reading, so it would be, it would become a policy tonight, so we can implement starting September 1st.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So, I think it was specifically about the threat teams. That's not, that doesn't have to be done until September 1st. That doesn't have to be.
So let me, let me provide some clarity.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, is there a special meeting that we could do?
And so what's required is to have a board policy that states that you're going to have one, and from a school perspective, is to have the named individuals on the team from a compliance perspective. The actual work won't manifest unless there's a need throughout the course of the year. And so there is an expectation that the teams meet to discuss students if there is a need on a monthly basis. And so from our perspective, we'll be, we will have a board policy that says that we have one, and we will have the named individuals led by Ms. Bolden, who is the district safety specialist. The liaison with the Oakland Police Department is the safety officer of record on this. You have to have either a counselor or a social worker, you have to have a teacher, and so on. So there's a minimum of five individuals that have to be named as representatives for the school. And so we will be in compliance with the board policy and the named individuals on our team. There's still training schools as of last week, and so this is a work in progress. It was mandated by the state as of last year. They didn't start giving out the actual guidance until this summer.
All right, move to a roll call.
All right, Mrs. Ezekiel.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko.
Yes.
And we're going to move to Section 13, miscellaneous. 13.01 is the Board of Education Core Values DEI Statement that we have been talking about. So this is up for a vote tonight. And then 13.02, which is the 2023-2024 District Mentoring Plan. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
No on 13.01, and yes on 13.02.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
No on 13.01, yes to 13.02.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
No on 13.01.
Mrs. Bushko.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to the second public comment portion. So this is for any item that you wish to bring before the board. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone have anything? Do we have a microphone?